All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on April 22, 2019. All members of the planning board being present call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is reorganization of the board.
Yep, I'll take nominations. So the first one is the local housing partnership?
Actually, you can...
No.
The chair first.
Oh, right, yep. The first one is the chair.
It's her first name.
I make a motion to appoint Steve Johnson as chairman.
Second that. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We didn't give him a chance to add.
That's all right, no.
I mean, he's still listening, you say. All right, so Steve Johnson will be the chairman.
Now the chair takes it.
So now I'll take care of the rest of them.
Perfect.
All right, so with that, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, all right, so with that, we'll take nominations for the vice chair.
I nominate Bob Fowler for vice chairman.
Second. All right, the motion is second. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none? All right, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Fowler.
Congratulations.
Now for clerk.
I make a motion nominate Vinnie Fertaglia for clerk.
So I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Fertaglia.
Because usually, the guy that gets elected.
Welcome back after your reelection as well.
Thank you.
And then, all right, so, okay, so I'll do it in a faster fashion if I can. Does anyone have any issue with any of the committees they're on? That they, you know, they don't want to be on them any longer or there's any request to be switched to anything else? So if everybody's satisfied, then just take it as one group. So we'll just, a motion to appoint all members to the committees they currently serve on. Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. There aren't any new ones, right?
Well...
Mr. Chairman, I thought there was. I thought there was a committee gonna be, somebody from the planning board going on. The, the new committee that's gonna look into the possible rehabbing of, of the property at North Street and Trahanes. I know other boards have appointed people to...
Okay, do we know if we have an appointment to that board? Because last time we got caught up on the school building.
We, we, there will be, there will be an appointment from the planning board. I don't believe the committee has been set up yet. I, I know...
By the selectmen.
The selectmen and the town manager were in preparation of setting that up.
All right, so I thought there was a stipulation on that, that you could not have the same member on the elementary committee.
It can't be, it can't be, the only stipulation was it can't be an acting member of the elementary school board member currently. So they were, like, somebody different.
All right, so then that obviously leaves four other members. So once that, that committee's created, we'll make our appointment. And if anybody has any interest in serving on it between now and, say, the next meeting, let us know and then we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Stalling is here and that meeting is postponed. 5:13.
Okay.
All right, so, okay, so that takes care of the, all the reorganization issues. So the only other, the only other issue, I'll just let anyone know who's listening or here or on their way here. The 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street slash several other addresses, North Andover Street, is gonna be continued to the May 13 meeting. So there'll be no, there'll be no discussion of that item tonight. It'll be continued when it comes up on the agenda later. But in case anybody's asking or thinking about that one, that one will not be discussed this evening.
Mr. Chairman, that was because of the applicant requested that, correct?
Correct. All right, so, moving on to agenda item B, which is approval of minutes April 1, 2019.
So moved.
Now we have motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Move to agenda item C, committee reports, administrative actions. Do any of the members have any committee reports they'd like to make at this time?
No, but I have a comment I'd like to make. Anna, if you are dealing with Hawthorne?
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm sorry. Residents at the, what's the new name?
At Cube Smart?
Huh?
Cube Smart? Cube Smart?
No, no. The apartment buildings the town council lives in, the residents at Tucksbury Center, they put a lot of shrubbery in there over the late fall, early winter. And I was out front, so it was very noticeable. So, I mean, a lot. I would say 50 to 60% of it died. So just, if they call or ask you for anything, just let them know that if you would. Board members, you drive by, you can see it. You don't have to drive in. It's just a shame, because they put a lot of shrubbery around all the, remember when they came in with the new walls, nude lights and signs and everything? Well, the plants died.
Oh, unfortunate.
And they're not little things like at the storage place.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Anna.
Just want to report, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I am a member of the local housing partnership and I was not able to attend the last meeting due to sickness. And just to report that I will have something at our next meeting regarding their local housing partnerships meeting. I know some of the issues discussed were the, the old police station down on Main Street and the number of other issues regarding affordable housing.
All right. Good, no other committee reports? Administrative actions? We request for a bond release for Heatherwood, 1624 Main Street. Do we have anyone here for that?
Good evening. Rob McShorley with Spago Technics, representing Heatherwood.
All right. Do you have anything you wanna? Nothing, okay. So, do we have the total on the bond?
Yeah.
5,000? All right. So the bond is 5,000. Any members with any thoughts or comments on this before we...
Yeah, my only comment is, we've had a lot of correspondence on the shrubbery in that site. Are they done?
My understanding is they're done and it's been reviewed by the town.
Okay, anybody else with anything?
No problem, all set, looks good.
All set.
All set, thank you.
Yep, so I'm glad we finally got to a point where we, we can close this out. It's been a long, long, long process. But I think where we finally got to is everybody is happy with that. So I hope you guys can keep up with that and everybody will stay happy. All right, so with that, take a motion on the bond release.
So moved.
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All set.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. I think you like seeing... All right, moving on to agenda item C3, 90 Fraser Lane, approval not required plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, for the record, Dick Cuco, representing the Davis family. Actually, the Davis family owns lots 18 and 19. And when they installed the pool, they didn't realize that the cabana was a structure that needed to meet the setbacks. So fortunately, they own both lots, so we had to put a little jog in the lot line. The reason that we just, we did it with a jog and not kind of with a meandering line is we needed to leave enough contiguous upland on Lot 19A so that it was still a conforming lot. So both lots have the proper area, frontage, and contiguous upland and they meet the perimeter ratio.
All right, with that, Mr. Fertaglia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I knew there had to be something more than what was explained in this process because of the jog. And I said, there has to be something going on with the pool there to, to make them put this jog into the, into the plot, the lot lines and so forth. So, but with that, you know, so we have enough footage now to allow that to be...
Actually, what'll happen is when you drive by there, the fence will be straight because the shed will be right up against the fence. So they thought that they could do that. And because the fence, the shed is over 120 square feet, you know, it can't. So, so fortunately, they own both lots.
All right, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler?
I bet this is the case of where the company that installed the pool showed the building inspector the pool and didn't show him the...
Well, what happens, Mr. Fowler, is that everybody after the pool goes in, they say, why are we looking at all those ugly pipes and filters and what have you when we should contain it? And then the other thing is, you know, you have to buy chemicals, so you don't want to leave those outside either, so, you know.
I'm all set. Thank you. Mr. Ryder?
All set, thank you.
Chair is all set as well. With that, do we have a motion on the endorsement of the A&R plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, so a motion to endorse the A&R. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Is this it behind us?
Yes, I think, I think Caitlin likes to make a copy of it afterwards, so I'll pick it up whenever she says it.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Everybody remembers to sign that before we head out tonight?
Yep.
All right. All right, so this will be the first one of these that I've been here for, so it's a little new to me. We're gonna go into an executive session at this point. What that means is this will not be televised. As I understand it, the minutes are still kept for this, but kept, they're not put out the way the normal minutes are. When the executive session is concluded, we will come back into our, our public session and finish the agenda items. A reminder again that agenda item E, which is the North Street, Andover Street, will be continued, which will leave just our old business, new business, correspondence, planners' report, anything else members want to discuss at that time. But that'll be done again public once we come back from the executive session. So with that...
I know people are home, you know, chomping at the bit to come back and watch this on TV when we come back. I would recommend that we lay that on the table for five minutes.
You want to go through some of the...
And do the other stuff.
Okay.
And then tell everybody, then when we come back, there'll be no more.
All right, that's fine. We can do that. I just, I wasn't sure whether there's a few things in the packet that I didn't want to hold them on longer, but that's fine. All right, so then with that, I'll take a motion to, so we'll put on hold the executive session. So we're gonna stay in, in public session now to finish out the agenda items. We'll then go to executive session, at which point we will only return long enough to adjourn the meeting. So there won't be any more in the meeting except for an adjournment once we come back. So we will continue with the public at this, I'm sorry. So do I have a motion to lay agenda item D on the table?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So then we will move on to agenda item E, which is 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover Street, et cetera. And the applicant has requested that we continue this meeting to our May 13 meeting, which will be at 7:20. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So we will hear that at our next scheduled meeting. All right, moving on to agenda item Old Business. Is there any old business anyone wishes to discuss at this time? All right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have one question. I want to know where we stand with the sidewalk committee and program in town. And it's getting to be this time of year, whether we can do some work on the streets and sidewalks? I just don't know where we are as far as that goes with the sidewalk committee and what the plans are coming forward from now till whenever. So maybe look into that, Anna, at some point and bring it up at our next meeting and have some discussion on that. That'd be great.
Yep, sure.
All right, very good. Any, any other old business? No? All right, any new business anyone wishes to discuss? All right, seeing none. Correspondence, we have a larger-than-usual package of correspondence, I think. Any, right? Does anybody have anything on the correspondence package that they want to discuss? Anna, you have anything to add?
So for Cube Smart, Cube Smart located at 395 Lubein Street, I'm just looking...
I'm sorry, give me one second. So is there anything else that you wanted to add to the correspondence section? Because I've got that first.
Oh, right, right.
And then we'll go through the other one.
Nope, I'm available for questions.
Okay, everybody's good with those?
Yeah, I have one comment, though, if I may. Reading the court case for the hotel...
I was starting on this. That's in the town planner one as well.
I'm sorry.
That's in the town planner one. I'm gonna go there next.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Anything else, just on correspondence? No? We're good? All right, so we're done with correspondence? Then we'll move on to the town planner's report and that includes the hotel. Anna?
Well, I'll let Mr. Fowler go first.
All right, Mr. Fowler, your question?
No.
Or comment, I'm sorry?
No, no. My comment is, I think the lawyers for our side and the town planner have done a great job presenting our case. Because it was appealed by the party across the street. And it's an interesting thing, but I won't go into it someday over a cocktail. Maybe I'll tell you about that same company, I mean, same homeowner appealed the self, the North Station when it was being built. Just think about that.
Anyone else?
But my comment is, I think they've done everything and I guess the last thing I heard was the judge was just gonna act on, or Lanko was gonna act on the traffic. And there didn't appear to be any traffic problems.
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be what this summary is, you know, this one is mostly discussing.
So that looks, to me, it looks positive.
Anybody else have any comments on this one?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just, I had heard through the grapevine that the applicant for the hotel has withdrawn his interest in that. Any news to that?
What grapevine?
I haven't.
Grapevine on North Street.
They withdrew...
I haven't heard of that.
It wouldn't be surprising, because they just finally finished...
I think they were waiting so long, I'm not sure if they actually withdrew or not. Just curiosity, if anybody had any news about that?
I haven't heard of anything.
Well, I mean, that, obviously, that's up to them what they want to do with that. But in terms of, you know, thumbing through this, it had to have been fairly interesting. I mean, you look at the traffic consultant for the plaintiff's side, who, it's noted more than once, apparently didn't read the bylaws, hadn't read our decision.
Talk about reading, slap.
It, it stretches the, the title of expert witness, I would think.
When you're not paid your...
When you haven't done any of those things, but...
When you're not paid as a witness, you're still a witness.
So we'll, we'll see how that shakes out and it's final. And then I think the other thing is, what, Cube Smart?
Yep, so in my town planner's report, I sent memo on Cube Smart. So I'm looking for guidance from the planning board on if the plan board will be doing a site visit. And secondly, in particular, the applicant, the property owner, is looking for guidance from the planning board in regards to the landscaping complaints. So in the packet is the information from the resident located at 27 Commonwealth Ave. And then we also received a complaint from the resident located at 15 Commonwealth Ave.
These both Lowell residents?
I don't know where I am.
They're both on the Lowell side, on the north side of the property.
Okay. Now, I mean, we, I know before, just, just as a recap, like, when we left this the last time, did we, didn't we already say to do what they were going to do and then we were gonna reevaluate it after they were done?
Were we extending the...
Yes, that's correct. And then, yeah, so I received this second complaint on, on Monday. And so that's why I'm just passing along to the planning board.
So do we know, has he done all of what we said, you know, go ahead and do what you agreed you'd do? Is that all complete at this point? And are these complaints on top of that or are these just ongoing?
It's ongoing. And I haven't personally gotten a chance this week to do a site visit, or last week. But in your packet, on the emails, there was the schedule of the work. So it's the email from, that was forwarded from Jay Tillman, April 5. And at the last page of that document is the schedule. So according to that schedule, the sidewalk should be done, the landscaping, the asphalt, and the two different asphalt, the striping and scarifying. So those should have been done. I haven't been able to get a chance to go out and visit. The vinyl fencing is done. And then, yeah, so basically, I'm looking for guidance from the planning board on this. The second resident was requesting that evergreens be placed along the north side in between the vinyl fencing and the others.
Between, so between the fence and the building? So they want more of a...
Between, well, it's kind of open for guidance from the planning board, but, Mr. Chairman, you know, along the north side, so...
So if I'm, if just from understanding, we're talking about, in these pictures we're seeing, we're talking about what goes along the backyards that are right there?
Mm-hmm. That's my interpretation of it.
So the pictures in the packet that you see from the porch, I guess, is what would be, what they would be asking about. Does anybody have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was at the, at the site today. And the fence comes right out to the sidewalk and it, and it does protect the resident on the Commonwealth Ave side. Both properties that have complained. There's no, there's no heavy machinery there, which was noted by the, by the complaint on the site. The pavement's all done, the striping's all done, the fences is all done, it's nicely painted as far as the doors. And, and the markings are done for the, for the parking spots. There's black chain link fence around the south side of the property completely. The dumpster is sectioned off completely as we, as we like. The front is landscaped, the curving is in place, and it looks great. The problem I have is I think this applicant that's complaining has some justice as far as it not being properly landscaped high enough to protect her from seeing the property or having some barrier there for her life and leisure at the property on Lowell. But, I mean, it, I think it could be, could be some issues there as far as doing it. But other than that, I mean, she lives in a commercial district. There's a commercial building next to her. I mean, there's nothing that we can do as far as, you know, taking that away from the property. It's a commercial building. So I've taken some pictures, if people want to look at them. And it's pretty bare as far as the tree, tree line there. But, you know, I don't think what she wants as far as putting up an entire row of arbovites that high is necessary, myself. So I don't think it's required. I kept maybe a few to give her some, some barrier there, but I don't think it's a complete job. I mean, I think what's there is there. It'll grow out. There are some flowering plants in the front. So, I mean, my opinion only, the board can do what we like. But I think a few, maybe requesting them to put a few arbovites there. But it can't be on this side of the fence. It has to be on the other side of the fence because that, this side of the fence is completely all finished and, and tired and so forth. So, but the fence came out right where the head was gonna be. It came right out to the edge, right to the sidewalk. So, and then it blocks their, blocks their view from their yard. So, I mean, I think if nothing else, maybe we request them to do a little bit of, a little more, couple more trees there, maybe a handful of trees there. But nothing to what she's looking for, a full, a full line of arbovites. But that's my opinion, so...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, both residents were looking for the arbovites, the evergreens, so...
Mr. Fowler, anything?
Sure. I like Mr. Fertaglia's synopsis of this problem. I don't like the idea of putting a few arbovites to satisfy one house when you've got seven houses on the side of the lot line. You put arbovites to block the building from that one house. What's to say the other six aren't gonna come back and say, well, we want them too? It wasn't part of the original plan. All the landscaping's been done based on the original plan. You could communicate with the owner and tell him the problem that you're hearing, but we're not gonna demand that he do it. I'm not gonna demand that he do it.
Ryder?
Thank you. I'll have to agree with my colleagues. I mean, according to the pictures, this is, you know, pictures right now or the last two or three weeks. Give another month or so, all these trees are gonna be grown in on this particular property. The one to the left, I mean, I see summer, spring, early fall, you probably wouldn't see, you'll have much shading in there, winter. But as stated, the applicant met all of the required landscaping, you know, extended the fence as asked. I feel it's a lot to ask. You're talking 30, 40 trees, arbovites, along that entire road. Because once you do one, the next neighbor and neighbor and neighbor all the way down until the edge of the road is gonna request them. So that's my opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was looking at more, you know, spreading them out, not just putting a few in a couple of, a couple of the houses that are complaining, but spread them out down, down the lot line, you know, and just to satisfy her request. But not as a complete barrier for her, her side and the next neighbor's side. Because I don't think it's required. Those trees are gonna grow in, like Mr. Ryder said, to a degree. I mean, all the lots are barren now because of the winter. But, so unless we want to put it off and wait till it happens in July and August...
We have a year within which we can bond to, you know, to the growing of shrubs for, and vegetation. So one would, I would suggest that we wait to see a year from now if there's something sticks out and we'll address it then. But right now, everything has been done.
Mr. Delaney, you have anything?
No, I'm all set. I mean, you know, they've done a great job with what they've done. You know, how can you extend it more and make them pay more money for trees and stuff to satisfy one? I don't, I go along with my colleagues, I'm all set.
I think in one of the pictures demonstrated, I think this is what they're asking for. Ben, I agree, you know, that's, that's 15 to 18 trees per lot. So six houses, I mean, it's a lot of, to grow in that. And then the downfall of arbovites in about 10 years, they get top-heavy one bad storm, it's gonna be looking for replacement at that point, so...
I guess, to me, I sort of agree with what's, one, you know, we know, you know, we know where this is located. This is not, you know, something that suddenly went up in the middle of a residential, an all-residential district. I mean, you are where you are. And at this point, with where the vinyl fencing's in, and like you said, the paving, at this point, if they were to be installed, they'd have to be installed in the neighbors' yards all the way down. They couldn't even go on the property owner's, you know, side anyways. They'd have to be put on the resident's side. And I'm not really keen on getting into, you know, having one of our, you know, some of we've permitted to now have to go putting trees in on other people's property in another town. When we were, we didn't ask for that to begin with. Plus, I, I mean, judging from these, I really don't think a sporadic placing of them is gonna satisfy the ones that we're getting these letters from. I mean, it sounds like they're looking for a curtain down the entire length of these two properties.
Steve, my mate, they, on the, if you look at the lot line, I believe their, their fence is off. They did save a row of trees in between what their lot line is and is the fence. So they did, according to their plan submitted, they did leave a, I don't have a scale with me, but...
Yeah, there's some footage here.
Five or six feet, seven feet of tree area.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess my, my thought process is still the same in terms of, I sort of agree with the, you know, once these are filled in, I mean, I, you know, the trees that are there are the trees that are there and they just happen to be, you know, they're gonna be filled in in spring, summer, fall, and not the winter.
Yeah.
I mean, unless somebody wants to go in and put up, you know, evergreens or whatever in that area, I just don't really see where you're gonna get what they're looking for any other way. So I guess for now, I think, you know, I don't think we have any new guidance for the property owner at this point. They can continue with what they've done and will, you know, continue to evaluate it over the, you know, our... it over the, you know, our year process and see where we stand. Obviously, continue to keep the board.
I have some pics here, if anybody wants to take a look at it too, so.
Keep the board informed of any, you know, complaints that come in, or comments or whatever, and get it again at some point. That sounds like the guidance the board wants to give for now. Alright, so that takes care of the planner's report. So that'll bring us to, back up to Agenda Item D, do I have a motion to put Agenda Item D back on the table?
So moved.
A motion made, second, a motion made, second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Okay, so that brings us back to our executive session, so, as I understand it, in order to move into the executive, and again, just to remind everybody at home, we're gonna do our executive session, it won't be live, but when we're done, we'll come back, but we'll only be coming back to adjourn the meeting, so there won't be anything further once we come back. My understanding is I have to take a roll call for moving into executive session. Mr. Ryder?
Here.
No, are you in favor of?
Yes.
Executive session? Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Okay.
Someone has to make a motion, though.
I'm sorry.
Do that after the motion.
Sorry, so do I have a motion to?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion made in second, now, for the roll call, I'm sorry, Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Delaney?
Yes.
Mr. Fertaglia, and chair votes aye as well. So with that, we will move into executive session, and we'll, we'll cut the live feed.